This record being in the board of education is due October 24th. Again, all thanks to the committee. On the record show of all board members present. As you can see, our superintendent is not here for business. He's been below his head. The iPad. I don't know if you can see it. There he is. He's waving at everybody. And we'll get to hear your voice. Wonderful world of technology. So let's ask everyone that has a lot to address the board of education, please sign and flip over to the front. It's up here on the table. As well as the record show that our board chairman is with us. This time I would ask that we have enough individual sound reflection to reflect on the power of you. Thank you. Before we move into the adoption, do you give a round of applause for our students at the conference? Ready to go. Talk to everyone if there are any changes that need to be made for the event.
There's no recommended changes. That's the plan.
Thanks, Peter. Any emotions about the agenda? Any emotions about the agenda? I think about the chair, the discussion, people. How to do this spot on student staff and new achievements. And the list. Thank you, man.
Good evening. I think it's absolutely fantastic that we have a school district that excels academically. We're excelling athletically in some areas. And we just have some amazing people. And tonight we're going to recognize some of them. We have a lady at Prestonburg Elementary who volunteered her time to have a workshop. And this is kind of a challenging crowd because she has children ages two to five and her family. And she was doing an art workshop with them. And it's all about getting kids ready for school. All ready. And our faculty and our staff, our kids, we have a lot of people volunteering for our families and our community members that aren't even yet a part of our school. And I think that's fantastic. So tonight we want to recognize Ms. Wendy Poe, art teacher at Prestonburg Elementary. Thank you. And I think it's because of adults and their moms who act with Poe that we have some other students here tonight that have given quite a lot of time and done a lot of hard work. Our head start kids had tractors and they were in the best shape in the world. And these tractors are extremely expensive. So these young men and women dedicated, I'm not sure, I want to say about 15 hours or more time to refurbish 18 tractors. And I can tell you this, the history of our kids, we're totally excited because they thought they had all their jobs. So we want to thank the Allen Central High School Junior ROTC. And while they're standing in a kitchen and standing so straight, I want you to think about all the hours they've been giving to kids. This is an amazing program. And we thank you guys. And thank you too, Sergeant Ridge. That's all we have tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on with the agenda, the ring to report on the student part by Allison from Mill. And the elementary. Move forward.
Good afternoon on the behalf of the faculty, staff, students, parents, the community, welcome to the Council of Good Schools at the elementary. And on behalf of the ROTC, this is another right place to know, so you got really good work to play for. At the Ripland Boy Parade the other day. So Sergeant Ridge came, they came through marching. I think the first state is probably saying that correctly. And we're in a very impressive site. And I just think we're a great asset to our district. And anytime we can get those folks to make a mistake, it could get lost. Get lost on that whole. First of all, before we start your presentation, I wanted to talk about our staff. The great things that you're getting me to see through this presentation, the great things that are going on at the school. Just come from a fantastic staff. Mr. Henson, I'll tell you upfront, we're just a very, very small piece of the puzzle here. All the credit is to go to the classified staff and certified staff and all the way from the bus driver, the booker, the teacher. They absolutely care about kids. And that's what makes a difference. Our teachers put in numerous hours. They do stay at the school with kids. They work during the planning period with kids. They do awesome things for our kids. And of course it shows, it really shows from this school. We are different. We met more, more than anything that our district talked about the other day. Two of our students were randomly pulled out of class and questioned about what, how do you feel about this school? And those students stated that they felt like they belonged here. They felt like they were cared about here and they loved this school. And to me, there's not a lot that you can say. We can make this school, that's great. If your kid loves the staff and the staff cares about them, it makes a huge difference. So I can't say that's about our staff. But again, the great things you're going to see today comes from the strength of much people set behind me. And even the working school this morning, we work together a lot. And I'll take that we do. Our teachers work every morning, the evening, and at lunch. We're all here together and it's really a great thing. I don't have any reservations. It's all about walking up to the dust teacher and say, "God, let me help." And they come help. And I think we have to say the same thing about our staff. We work great together. It's just really, truly, I'm blessed to have the opportunity to work with such great people. And I also want to thank you guys. The things, the success that we're having, the great things that are going on in our school, it starts with you all. It starts with you guys. So on behalf of our faculty and staff and our community, thank you guys for the opportunities you've given us for all of these kids. Thank you. So this gentleman's person, Democrat, is 3.9. We're up. We actually grow a little bit every year. We've actually, I think, gone in two years, grown about 15, 16, 17 kids. And again, we attribute that to just great teachers. They will often come in and say, "We want to be a part, be a part of your school." We hear great things going on in the community. We hear all this stuff about you. And we want to be a part of that. So we've actually seen one or other in the past years that I've been here. Our attendance rate, 96.77, and that is a year to date. Something that we work a lot, work hard on, making sure that our kids at school, we do believe and know that all that success can come when we're here. We can't teach them if they're not here. Whether with the second amendment of God, it provides that recourse and that opportunity. But we really believe that faith plays, because those kids, we survive. We work a lot on making sure our kids are here. And I think that won't be, I think that shows through our good attendance. Our pre- and pre- and is around 75, 76 percent, same as what we're at today.
About the status of the state of the nation. She said that 25%.
Exactly. 25, around 25, 26 percent. I think last year we finished a year a little over 26 percent. Check your mic, so it's a little bit. We do have, we do have a lot of folks who've come in. And again, I attribute that to our faculty, staff, and our teachers because they all work with their kids. And we do have some folks who've come in. So we've heard great things about the programs you've got in your school. And we want our kids to be a part of that. We do have some comments like that. But again, that goes back to our staff, which is a great thing. Our next slide. Our next generation achievement, our goal this past year was 80. As you can see up on there, we were 83.3, so we've exceeded a little bit. We attribute a lot of that to our systematic focus on the standards of vertical alignment. Our team meeting men twice a week. We have a great level POC. So while our six teachers get together at least once, and we want to talk with them during planning time, and they need more than that. So we have to just get together once a week and they talk about kids. They talk about the great things for them. They talk about what things we need to do to help kids move in the right direction. And then we also have a content specific POC once a week. So our team is basically at least twice a week talking about standards, talking about kids, and things we need to do to get them to be successful. And most of them just know that. Most of them say, "We want..." Except I go down there, but any given day, I find my teachers together. Which is a great thing. Our sixth and seventh graders now all have laptops. So the implementation technology, and thank you guys for that. We were up to seventh grade, so about two-thirds, 66 percent, roughly 72 of our students have that thing. Our teachers are working really, really well with that. I think they'll tell you that it should provide us some great opportunities for our kids. Our kids really, really, I think, enjoy the opportunities that come from that. So that's been a great resource for us. And we talk daily in our school. We talk about rigor, differentiation, and making sure that our kids, the expectation is there. And you will see even later, college is the expectation that our kids have. I think you have an opportunity, we have an opportunity to go upstairs and see our walls and our classrooms, our doors. And we try to make it pretty clear, college is the expectation for us too. So the rigor level here is really, really high. We really have a lot of expectations out there for kids. Next generation GAD. Our goal was 60. We have pretty good jobs there. 79.9. We do implement RPI. We have various computer programs coming through, usually live, collect high sales. We use that for math, reading, and writing. The reading writing has come along this year. But the math, the math department is really, really, really effective program. We do reading and visiting now all grade. Last year, last couple of years, it's really been a time where we focused on seventh grade. But this year, our teachers are, our teachers are going to be training again. We've got full session, both of you do the training. And we're doing it on all grade levels. And that program is really, really effective. And we have two fantastic students. We've got a staff now supporting our kids in the RPI program. Doing really, really, really good things for those kids. We do individual goal setting. During that, we look at pay group, with the thingling, we look at attendance, we look at grades. And each individual child has a secret sheet. This is, this is our first school, their attendance, their grade. And the teachers work with them on ways to improve the success that they have, looking at all of, all of the different areas. And in recent, we do, we focus on basic learning. We, this year, we're going to offer geometry. Of course, we're going to do that. We've got several student guys, they have four to three students who are currently taking high school geometry class. So we're doing the best we can to push them, accelerate them in math, hand them in the job, right to get any part of the things that we're working on. But we've got the other ones, the other leaders, initially, we have to do the off, the off geometry. Hopefully in future, we can continue to boost them on those higher classes. And Laurie Bailey works great with us. I mean, come to talk and say, "Hey, we want to do this for our kids. He, he, what do you need from us?" And the staff at the high school are really great with us on that. And I want everybody to, anything that we need, advise the students. And the good times, he's actually a teacher up here. We've got our staff and they have to work with us and do that consistently. A great relationship that we go out and do and make out and out of the house. Of course, we've implemented our knowledge boost plan. We do have loan awesome. And again, that goes back to the great staff, great teaching, great things going on. But we still, we do still have students who are 40 dollars. And we've got plans in place to, to do this again, to move them out of there. Our next generation, for all this, the difficult area you got to see is how the school that you go to, it seems to be a lot of for all of us. If you have a really, really big old year, it hurts you coming back to next year. So our goal is to save the school 63.8. So that's something we're taking a look at. And we'll continue to work on that. We'll look at teachers. And we've got a main school that's the next one. We're going to look at patterns. And hopefully we find things to help, to do what this is and improve. We do this through strategic schooling. We're talking about original classes, our advanced classes, the third. And of course, again, it all goes back to rigor, your protection classroom, making sure that we teach your kids on a level. And you can develop that, and that's what we value there. Of course, college career readiness, again, the expectation, and I think you get to say this too. We talk about college as kids. This is, this is, this is the expectation that you go got. Especially if you shoot for the moon, if you don't make it, you still want to do good things. And I think we have what kids want to do. So again, we give that expectation. We've got thingling data, we use GATE for anything. We've got a new program for bar. We applied for a grant last year. And this is a billion grand, they tradition begins here in Wiltshire, the whole town. And the program we do once a week with all our students. We've got folks from the United States that are part of this program, this co-op. And we communicate with them. A lady just here the other day working at our program and giving us suggestions and advice. We look at the child and we look at home situations. We look at grades, we look at attendance, we look at everything. And it's really worth to come up with strategies and ideas to help with, and with children growing. We do college visits. This year, we're taking six graduate to Big Sandy. So first to U-PAC, direct first to the Oregon. That's the plan that's currently in place. We, of course, we do all Russian preparation. We have each institution, students that are out there. Our program reviews and career data. We really, really, really push that, move that college readiness and moving on.
Do you have a thought or something to remind my little college friends?
We do, I think our experience is something that tests the condition out. I know that the different teams you have along with, especially their math students, those basic math students. That's kind of part of why we're pushing these students to these advanced classes. And we talk to high schools, we listen to folks there too. And if we can get some of the classes, the first, the top of the classes out of the way while they're here. So when they go to high schools, they'll jump in and say, "Well, step, step around the class." And you get them onto the college early. That's part, that's part of, part of the program. I guess, just in that previous, the, to find out the high school, give them some of the best level of course, to get them. To give them, to kind of give them a link, definitely, and hopefully do that.
What, what rate do you say that, on the same, are you a secret?
Well, actually, it only starts on six. And this past year, we've always accelerated math. We already had, had accelerated six, seven, eight right now.
Yeah, you're right, it is the opposite.
Yeah. Now, this past year, we started planning to talk. Of course, it's a new program, of course, it's something we just have been interacting with. We've been with our current sixth grader. With last year's sixth grade, we had a few students who would just seventh grade halfway through the year to land at our. Those is this year halfway through the seventh grade, when we've got, we've moved another six person behind them. Hopefully at some point, we'll be able to present them that program actually start in the off in sixth grade. And end it in advanced on the dark classes or goals. But by now, we're just looking at scheduling and fundamentally getting them to respond. Our next generation registration rate, of course, we've had additional stations. You can see the debate, I guess, on a lot of that. We've been, been great with, with students who really, really work hard and produce and, and do great things. Directing the business and our LP development. Students spend time researching college and career readiness, something that they do. Give in our computer, every one of our electronic rotations. Their electrical classes. All teachers from all school career readiness and expectations. We do the student communication. The decorations going around the building, as you can see. Of course, attendance will again be attributed to that. Just recently, we've had Big Sandy Community College has been working, working great with our staff. They have sent professionals up here to work with the teachers. They've done several programs that are really successful. I think we do a great thing for our kids. The Big Sandy needs to be stepping in now, sitting close here behind us too. Our program review, we're currently at maximum levels. We have no points on that. We've got a rotation, the inner escape, where there's an opportunity to, to look at the arts and work with professional studies. And world language, foreign language, of course, that has come on this year. And one of our teachers, he's actually been on board with that and working in Spanish. And of course, we're working with the teachers at the high school too. And pushing the laptops and helping people to go, to think of it, communication. And I spoke to the other day, she was talking about the student, the princesses that she currently has. And how she's already seeing growth in those kids who are coming from us last year that she was able to work with and get back over here on the side. So that's just been a really good thing for us. Our active school art and drama clubs. We have a typical super, we have a very good one here to do that. The Anthony Club, which is another thing that's been growing apart this year. We've got lots of things for that. Because we do it, we have speakers and artists here. We do, we're trying to take our kids on field trips, thank Dr. Barrett. We're able to take our kids to the science center. And we're deciding about that. And hopefully we can get all kids to do that this year. Actually visit campus while we're there. Let our kids, I said, get to go on college visits also. And of course, we, our advisory lessons in the bar program focus on this bar program review thing too for child.
How many kids would you say are studying in those, in the school?
Your brother, where you run?
I think 20 to 30.
I mean, 20 to 30. He is 20 to 30 in his Anthony Club specifically. I think the Friday afternoon.
I think it's 30.
On Friday afternoon, there's 20 to 30 kids staying at school with him for Anthony Club. And that's what he loves. He's been something that kids that love to do. Awesome. Same thing, and then number 330, we say 337. I think the number 337. You have to put it in the second. Student school, school distinction. Five consecutive years, she says, celebrated previously for fishing and better. Last year, we're fortunate to have two bonus scores. State, STLP, we have two students who represent state champions, something called Bench Challenge. And our team ranked 20th in talking in the state, which is really pretty impressive for us. And great, great accolade to see her team. KIAA was a delegation of distinction. They, we had a top rank building. We actually, we've got a top rank building possession. And it's considered an outstanding delegation. Our academic team, regional runner-up, and finished 22nd in the state in a 337 musical. Our quick recall team, six students advanced to state competition last year. We anticipate doing that again this year and actually taking more students. Our academic team is doing some wonderful things right now. And we anticipate going back to state again. We had two students took place in the top 10 last year in the next in two different areas on state level academics. In 2016, Jayway Champion, Rip Sis, and Quick Recall. We have two national awards for our faculty and staff. Our showcase, we had first place in the best in show. It's just a plethora of great, great, great guiding, a lot of veterans essays to 4A conservation essays. And we want this on the wall, great guiding, going on school, a lot of, a lot of awards from that. And he puts her, her all right there, calling the seniors, seniors have good success across the board. A lot of, a lot of good things going on. I finished all of the other days, we're dying now. We've been an actual professor, Phil Thorne, his staff, and we work really hard at school. Some 600 kids in and out the door all the time. And they, and they, they really, really do help us. But again, that's, that's just the tip of the iceberg. And all the direction that we've talked a long time about the achievements we've got. But the main thing that we're, we're going to focus on is just giving our kids opportunities to be successful. And that's what all this stuff is about. And sports programs to the class, it's about giving kids opportunities. It's about letting them choose to go to college and make a, make a career for the state. But again, all that comes back to the staff. God, they go back to you all and your readiness and the things that you've done to provide us with the opportunities we've got. So thank you. You got any questions? Okay. Pleasure to go on to the board. Thank you.
Good evening.
Evening.
I said it before you last year, and I said, "We will not be proficient next year." Well, I didn't have crystal balls, but what I did have was this wonderful state of city in Miami. It's qualified to have this chance that I know you could do it. And they did, and I'm so very proud of them.
Great job.
So here we are, distinguished. And we will, we will not be proficient next year. And there's our, our immigrant, news is saying on 92 percent, we're going to get the call back. So that should be safe, me too. And that is 3.5 if I had to our class. According to rumor. Next generation achievement, as you can see, we made 96 games from our goal. One thing that we do have is place in the scheduling. And in order to have place in the scheduling, you have to have place to teach with. And I know we saw it, not everybody was there sometimes, because we give up these ideas and say, "Okay, no, we'll try this." And they might grow behind our bias. But they're very flexible and they're very willing to do anything we ask them to do. Because they know that any decisions we make are made what's best for kids. And sometimes you have to be very flexible in, in order to make kids leave. Dishing conversions, we're very excited that our fifth graders have laptops. We also were able, thanks to supplement, we were able to purchase a classroom set. And third and fourth grade, sometimes I think maybe two or three of them. So we're hoping to make you that classroom set. And they're a remote unit that they can move around and use in fourth, third, and fourth grade. And our primary is excited about that too. I think they would like to be able to use them. Next generation GAD. As you can see, we made great jumps there. We're very excited about that. We use a lot of computer hardware to research data, especially in math and reading. We're like in that, they have three, two, two in school and one at the school that works with kids. And we, the teachers meet in POC twice a week. One in administrative and one in try classes. And they analyze the students' benchmark cases of. And so I really get to know the kids by analyzing all the work they've been putting in the benchmark. We also have this wonderful family resource director that works with family and to me, me, me and our students have, and right up here in us. They've grown. We've made some nice great games there. Though when you're proficient, which means you have a lot of you know us. And so we worked on that and we have grown and we're very excited. We did project based growing with our students, which is starting that and revealing on that in our places. And reaching in arts. And of course, it doesn't help, it doesn't hurt to have two very talented musicians on the staff. Miss Craig and Miss Turner. And they'll put their dance, and people with their music. And Miss Craig, her apartment's art in her music class. We're working, the one thing that we need to work on is dance and drawing. And Miss Turner just recently went to a workshop on drawing. And we're hoping to get some people here to work with our kids on that. We're excited about doing more with dance and drawing. College and career readiness. We do a lot, as you can see, our presentation in the beginning. We had a very special day, it can be a very special day, and it was very exciting. We had teachers, very special, we should feel glad to see. Miss Kate Jacob got Alison Rogers from Midraine, the weather lady to come and visit. One of our teaching challenges is the baker, he misses the kids. And the energy she tells us is, I think it's a game, or we see what we can do. And so we came to visit. So we had speakers coming in and talking to kids about barriers to careers that they may not afford. But that's just me, we talk about careers all the time in our place. We're having a career day in the neighborhood where we have several people from the community coming. We had Kate sit around here and they can, and kids get to stop and talk to them. And they break up that day as well. And they give them free sets to look at, to get to enjoy the things. We're very excited about that. Next generation, we have graduation rate. We know this begins in the end, so you don't wait till it's time to go college. We talk about time to go high school, we talk about graduation. So we straightened the order here. And we have wonderful mentorship from the year. They have one board that, previous board meetings, three remaining. They have one of those, uh, previous board meetings, three reunions, so we're very excited about that. And our property review, we saw a sample of that, Miss Turner and her Spanish class, uh, they did a great job, and I was so excited we go watch them. We do student performances, at least every time of the year, we're actually having one tomorrow, where the students are performing and, and, uh, community parents, grandparents come in and watch them. And at D U two four, we do a lot of musical and art. Um, we had college visits in fourth and fifth grade, they go to three state and, um, U-VI, I assume it's not the college, that's what it was known, but they visit U-VI. And thanks to Dr. Barrett, we are taking the bridge to the science center, appreciate that, and, and. We, uh, we're a school of distinction in, uh, state value fourteen, our district acting team, which changes last year, um, a three and ten, it's whether it was a region, we had several at place, as you can see, we have one teacher who's nationally certified on, we have net, that's working on that right now. We have several teachers that are in the CIA, telling them to take the places. But for every morning, you cannot take the places, you're always online, looking, trying to, to make them themselves, trying to register, to work with the kids. And I can't be more proud of, of our staff, and I already said that, and I can't break on the net, there are, what do you want from me? And like, Wes says, it's not just the teachers, I don't make a difference to our teachers and, and special sessions, uh, at the period, so I have anything we ask them to do, the monitors, our custodians, and, and sometimes I know Wes, uh, we act like we're bad sometimes because we got very high expectations, but they, uh, stepped up and did exactly what we asked them to do, we're very proud of all of, everyone in our school. And we are racing fifteen, and we're very proud of that, very excited this year. And we have a panel of distinction, whatever it takes, our kids are worth, we did offer that motto years and years ago, and we truly believe that, and our teachers live on here for these class, and whatever it takes, our kids are worth it.
Questions are coming from both.
You have a question, I'm glad.
Great.
I have heard of it. You know, I used to have a lot of pressure when I was a student, from the, now I'm out of pressure. The one thing we do so well, it will be so difficult to continue, once you get the number and you know, hide the secret, and always present it with so wonderful people. It was a time, it's just the beginning, there's no very, very plan, very, uh, but after there can, after students from the college, they all sit down together and then plan really, and been planning, been planning, but it feels like maybe hundred, hundred fifty come, they can have a friend, or, or lizard, or, or, and then we plan, if he's going to want to the ice cream, and that is a four K, and press it, we're thinking it's difficult one, you probably can't drive it. Now, we really appreciate all you have and everything you do to take for our kids and what, all that we do in our nation, and you provide a lot of change in wherever it's made come from.
Thank you, great, no, great.
Members of the board of education, and, uh, I'll go ahead and say, I don't want to sign up for space, uh, someone that's going to be arrested for it, I'm very open with it here. You can do that from my end.
Okay, I'm sure I speak for all of you, but I express how proud you are of our district and our accomplishments, and it takes all employees to help us have it, whether it be feeding them, transporting them, keeping them, keeping things clean for them, or supervising them. A month, around a month ago, I talked to Dr. Webb about the possibility of a raise for our employees. And unfortunately, some people are not going to hear about this.
Do you have a real name for that?
Um, I know times are hard for all school districts now, but the cost of health insurance will probably increase, and anything we can provide could only help. I think we owe it to our employees to do whatever we can afford to do this time, and Dr. Webb assured me that he was really into this. So is he able to do the research on this matter?
Dr. Webb, you want to speak?
Yes, Mr. Chair, uh, since I'm, uh, here in video, I'm, I'm not sure how good you can hear me, I'm asking Matt to make some comments.
We got you down there.
So you can hear me?
Oh, yeah.
Yes. I'm asking Matt, I'm asking Matt to make some comments.
He's coming down.
Matt Watson. The final, it's, what great job you did.
We've been, uh, looking at, uh, trying to get a rate, uh, building into this budget this year, right? I've been really, really taught, uh, because we, we, we put together the charity budget and then I, we was trying to build in a one percent.
Pull that just a little bit closer, and, and.
We, we were trying to build in a one percent, what we've kind of, trying to build into the budget, and with the knowns and unknowns that we have, it, we just couldn't make it work this spring. This summer, when we, we, the final working budget, we still didn't have all the pieces of the puzzle, we called the final C-K, come out when we done the final working budget, and we talked about that, uh, Betsy Lane. And then we get the information that the health insurance is one of, are off the staff. I think the standard plan is a one percent. And, and we took another look at it, and we, we run the numbers, we run the numbers, and we've got to do something, we've got to continue. We feel at, on the administrative side and, and on the board side, that we've got to continue enhancing the salary schedule as much as possible, uh, to help our staff do this. We, we've got to maintain physical efficiency and solvency, but we've got to take care of our people. Having said that, we believe that we can do a half percent, it's, it's not what we've been doing for one for a couple of years in the statement, but it is something, and it should cover the increase in cost of health insurance premium on a standard plan, on stock, to, to, to take. To do this, we would reduce our contingency down, uh, about a hundred and sixty thousand in general, uh, that's negative to me, to about me and I four. Uh, we can, we can do that, we've had it at that level in years past and, and fine, but we have tried to stay at a quarter percent, this puts us at about three point.
You say three point nine?
Yeah.
Is that a recommendation, Matt?
Yes.
It's my understanding that this bureau has commented, Dr. Webb and Matt, uh, what they're recommending is a half percent increase.
Yeah, and that's, and that's happened in some districts, a couple, not very many.
And our staff is certain, and, uh, we just keep doing that for, we just.
You have a very well put, are you, in the thinking board?
So I would be honored to entertain a motion.
I'll take, I'll make the motion to give.
Your motion, you have a second.
Okay.
Your motion is second, Matt, Mr. Ermly, under discussion.
We would, we would need to make that, uh, to where we change this out of the schedule also, and as it's effective as of July one.
This will be effective as of July one, is that correct?
Yes.
And this is a all percent, correct?
All four times, uh, all four times.
All four times, uh, a half percent increase.
Thank you very much. We have a motion, we have a second, is there any discussion? Yeah, we have a motion, second. Is there anybody opposed? So moved. Thank you all very much. I know that I will appreciate it. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Three months, I'd like to speak up, members of the board of education. Comments? Thank you all. Uh, public comment, we don't have anyone to sign up to speak this evening, raises the item four on the agenda. Uh, four A and four B, if we can link those together, there's no question for comments. Uh, I tell you, the motion.
No motion.
No motion. Second, any discussion? Any opposed? So moved. Bring the slide of five on the agenda. Five A is to receive a report of superintendent questions and comments on that report. Here you go, any motion to receive? Your motion, we have a second.
I'm second.
Any discussion? Any opposed? So moved. Five B is to receive a utility report around the central middle of the elementary school, questions and comments on that report. Motion received.
What motion?
You have a second.
Shouldn't that be for this floor, not for the other?
I'm sorry.
It said receive a utility, utility report for stuff, uh, on the tree.
Did I say that?
Yeah, it should be, Alan Central Middle Line, in that.
Okay. Received the utility report around the central middle of the elementary school. Is that something?
It's actually showing somewhere, I can see the two, in the top of.
I saw a couple of type, type of.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion, you have a second. Any opposed? So moved. The last support members to take a look at the concern agenda, item six, eight through six. Item six A through six B. Does anyone need pull for discussion? Here you go, I would entertain a motion for about six A through six B as a victory.
Motion.
Motion allowed.
Second.
Second, the jury, any discussion? Any opposed? So moved. We need an executive session, sir? We do not. Thank you, sir. We need a motion to adjourn. No motion, is there another second?
Second.
Second, the jury, we stand adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, everybody, please travel safe.